I call the Subcommittee on Diversity, Inclusion, and Minority Women Own Business Enterprises to order. We will take up the following item for approval. And that's Action Item 1A, the approval of the minutes of June 26, 2023 meeting. I move the approval of Action Item 1A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
One abstention.
Okay.
Around the committee.
Okay, motion carries. With no policy items on the agenda, I will address the information items. There are two information items on the agenda. Item Information 2A is the Diversity Programs Update. Senior Vice Chancellor for University Human Resources and Labor Relations, Chancellor Gloria will present the item.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We're going to start by actually giving you a few stats. Today's is not so much stats related, but I wouldn't want to miss giving a little bit on our faculty hiring initiative, particularly since we are in Phase Two. And as you can see, we have 265 new hires from the academic year in 2022 to 2023. And so far, we've got 251 in academic year 2023 to 2024, so 516 total educators to date. And as you can see, there's 382 will teach at the senior graduate and professional schools, and 54% of them identify as women and 50% people of color. So there'll be a lot more slice and dicing of the stats on this to come, but I just thought that it would be a good opening piece of information for our update tonight. Please stop me if there are any questions along the way. Okay, this is our Faculty Fellowship Publication Program, and this is our final report. Every year, we have a cohort. And this year, we actually also celebrated the 25th anniversary of the program. It's considered both a diversity-based and a retention-based program. And it is run out of university HR, but we are of great support from the chancellor and from Provost as well. And they also attended the 25th anniversary celebration this year, which was a really great and uplifting event. And we actually had the founder come and attend as well. So this is a really, it's a mentoring program essentially, and it's been a very successful one. Many of the people who go through the program go on to be successful, writers, educators, et cetera. So it's a program we're very proud of, and we've been able to keep it going for 25 years, despite COVID and every other thing that might get in the way. And we did have 47 fellows went through the program this time, and it lasts a full academic year. Okay, I want to run through a series that we have put together as part of the Chancellor's Campus Climate Initiative. I mentioned in the past the planning of it, and now I just want to bring you up to date on what's happened so far. We're calling it the Diversity Dialogues. They are open to the entire university. The first one since we last met ran in April, and this is the Gender-Based Violence Resources. And we kicked it off in April, which is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and we honored the resiliency and healing of survivors while highlighting this very important issue. Some of you may know this is an issue that the Governor's Office in New York State in general is taking very seriously. And we had an excellent panel, which discussed a number of different, very specific actions to combat gender-based violence, including ways to support victims and survivors of gender-based violence. Thank you. I'm an assistant. In June, we actually had two. And the first one had to do with disability. And this is an all-too-often-overlooked area of discrimination. So this one presented a unique perspective regarding disability-based discrimination, explanations of how disability-based discrimination manifests in the workplace. And we also discussed the significant value that disability-based hiring practices can have on an organization such as CUNY, and why, as a community, we should focus on making the workplace inclusive to those with disabilities. Perhaps one of the only good things that came out of COVID is that the workforce, people with disabilities in the workforce, were actually able to find openings that they hadn't before because the idea of remote work was suddenly so embraced and before it had been looked at as a significant accommodation. And that progress has continued. Go next, thank you. And the next one we did in June had to do with cross-campus advocacy. And most of the dialogues you'll see are presented by people within CUNY. Sometimes we have panelists that join us, but we try very much to tap the talent and the knowledge that we have within CUNY and across the university because it is abundant. And people are usually very happy to participate. So in this particular case, it featured a moderated panel presentation with cross-campus advocacy through the university LGBTQ Council and Wellness Centers, which have made significant recent improvements to address the needs of transgender and gender nonconforming individuals within our own CUNY system. And topics that were discussed were current status of gender identification at CUNY, mental health support, engagement trainings, access to gender-neutral facilities, and other cross-campus advocacy that offers a useful roadmap forward for the larger CUNY community. For each of the slides, I'm just presenting to you the people that were there for your interest. And just today, actually, we had this particular diversity dialogue, another area of category or protected category that is often overlooked, veterans. And here in New York City, it's particularly difficult because the percentage of veterans in the city are lower than they are throughout the state, mostly because of the high cost of living here in New York City. And so this was a placeholder. We actually ended up with a conference panel of four people, three from within CUNY, Director of Veterans Affairs, a Coordinator for Inclusion at the CUNY's Office of Veterans Affairs, and Director for the PROVE Project, which is the project for return and opportunity in veterans' education. And we also had the Assistant Commissioner for Policy and Strategic Partnerships at New York City Department of Veteran Services. So very lively discussion. Several of the panel members are veterans themselves. And we discussed access and barriers to success in post-employment education and employment, and biases and misconceptions that veterans still face today in both education and employment. Coming up in October, this will actually be, I think, a special sort of event. It's in honor of Hispanic History Month. It will not be a panel or a speaker. It will actually be a live performance-based event, and it will feature Dr. Javier Avila, a professor of English as well as a poet, novelist, and public speaker. He writes in both English and Spanish, and his work has earned him numerous awards, including his most recent honor as the recipient of the Cultural Arts Award given by the American Association of Hispanics in Higher Ed. And essentially, he uses humor and all sorts of performing aspects into his one-person show, poetry, comedy, to celebrate the American Latino or Latinx experience. So we're really looking forward to that. It will be a fully live performance event coming up October 26. Some other things we have on tap from a program perspective for diversity is we do have an annual professional development conference. But this year, it will focus on bridging the growing divide and working towards inclusivity and consensus. It will run virtually, so hybrid, actually, I should say, live and virtually, November 9 through 10. Last year, we had about over 80 sessions. So it is a program that is growing each year that we have it. And I think the participation this year should certainly outdo last year, particularly because I think the topic has been very, very well received. Another thing that we have been working on is a partnership with the New York City Commission on Human Rights. We have partnered with them to present specific workshops for CUNY. And some of these are in person and some of them are virtual. The first one is Human Rights Law and Protections in Employment, and that was already presented twice. And we will be firming up dates for November sessions, probably two for Understanding Jewish Experiences and Anti-Semitism. And we have Human Rights Law, Anti-Black Racism, and Other Forms of Discrimination coming up in December. And then you'll see, we have two others that are on demand. So anytime somebody wants to view it, we've added it to our library. Disability Awareness and Etiquette, and LGBTQ, The Power of Inclusion. So what I like about this is that this is an ongoing partnership. And New York City Commission on Human Rights obviously has a tremendous amount of resources. So their library is of particular interest to us. And it's free, and free is always good, especially when it's a quality product, which I think it will be. And the last thing I want to share with you is actually a CUNY-wide initiative, the DEI Hub. This went live in June with both campus-based and CUNY-wide content. University HR supported CUNY's Office of Transformation, as did many others, in the development of the new hub. And I think what's great about it, it is that it is multipurpose, lots of resources, events, policies. It's also how to report a complaint of discrimination or retaliation. It's also how to report sexual misconduct, because those are two different paths. And it is a live, living site. And by that, I mean that it is updated on a very regular basis. And that is usually, if you've ever put together a site with resources, that's the biggest challenge, is keeping them fresh and keeping them going. And it puts everything in one place, both CUNY and for our campuses as well. That is what I wanted to share with you today from a program perspective. Next time we get together, we'll probably be able to look, start looking again at more statistics. We usually pull our numbers in November and have them to report on somewhat shortly thereafter. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Any questions or thoughts? Okay, therefore, we're going to move on to information item 2B, the MWBE and SDVOB Programs Update. Chief Procurement and Supplier Diversity Officer, Martin Stella, will make a presentation on this item.
Thank you, Trustee Wilkin. So after discussing with Trustee Wilkin and some other members of the Subcommittee, we wanted to provide an update or maybe a recap and highlights of what was the MWBE Conference that was held back in May. I think it was, it is important to reflect on it because the last one was in 2019. So it took four years for us to get, you know, back together face-to-face and especially, you know, considering that everything that went through the vendor community. So I think that it was a successful one. Humbly speaking, there's things to correct. But all in all, I wanted to provide some overview and then some goes over some numbers. The format, again, was held at John Jay College of Criminal Justice on May 24. We started off with a nice VIP breakfast hosted by President Carol Mason. We did, went into a plenary session in a beautiful theater. It was well-attended. We had an impeccable line of keynote speakers. We had Chair of this Subcommittee, Trustee Wilkin. We had Chair of the Board, Bill Thompson, EBC Batista, our chancellor, of course. Hope Knight was there, the CEO of ESD. Assemblymember Rodney Bishop Hermeline. She honored us with her visit, came all the way from Albany. Michael Gardner, New York City Chief of Small Business, Diversity Business. And we were honored with Eric Mayer, Mayor Eric Adams' attendance and speech. It was really, really an impressive lineup of people that joined us in our event. The next session was, or section, rather, we had six panels and workshops that were the result of a focus group that we did in the preparation stage. We purposely didn't want to assume or guess what the vendors wanted to see or not see. We did a focus group with 20 companies, 10 on the construction business and the other 10 on various sectors. And we all collectively came out with these six panels that were very, very interesting. Of course, explore opportunities with, on the construction side, on DASNY, and of course, CUNY, how to prepare winning responses to solicitations. There was one around especially IT. These days, we are heavily investing in infrastructure, so there's a lot of IT projects going on. And so this was a well-attended session. We did have an SDVOB procurement town hall, which we can't do enough for the SDVOB community. So this is something that we really wanted to address and give the importance that they deserve. And then we had a very intense, I would say, educational session with the Chambers of Commerce and various regional associations that Trustee Kim helped moderate and did a phenomenal job, along with Trustee Myra Linares. With all the, you know, wisdom and insights and do's and don'ts, and they shared resources that vendors, there was an awful lot of questions. And it was, it was a good, good, you know, a vivid discussion, financing options, things of that nature. So the last part was, to me, was one of the highlights of the entire conference, was the one-on-one business pitching with, when the vendors, they would have to sign up in advance and they would give, we would give them 10 minutes of, for them to pitch their company, their products or services or both, and get their undivided attention of procurement directors from all of the colleges and, of course, central office. That was really, really well-received by the vendor community. In terms of numbers, we had over 800 attendees, which was very close to the numbers, I understand, we had in the past. That's considering that this is the first one in so many years. I think it's, we all should feel good about this. We had over 60 exhibitor tables. We had agencies like NYPD, Port Authority, New York City School Construction Authority. We had MTA. Chamber of Commerce, like Long Island African-American Chamber of Commerce, Regional Alliance for Small Contractors. And then private companies to the tune of, we had Granger, we had Goldman Sachs, we had Nagaro, Edge Electronics. And then we have a very healthy list of companies in the construction industry. We had like, almost 20 tables were construction-related companies. So that was very, very interesting to see. So since the picture, it's worth the southern words, I wanted to share some pictures, which they don't really do justice to the energy and the enthusiasm that we felt throughout the conference. But I think it's good for us to reflect and see what it looked like. I think we, there are certain things that we should be proud of, and there's other things that we need to adjust. And, you know, we learn, we can only get better. And I think that, you know, next year is going to be even, even better. I'm going to pause here and see if the Subcommittee has any questions, comments, recommendations.
No, but I do, yes.
So the event was very good. It was excellent. So thank you for organizing that. Are we asking questions on the breakdown yet, the city breakdown, or is that after this?
After.
After, sorry.
Yeah.
Then I'll hold back.
I wanted to make a pause before switching to a different subject. So yeah, this is actually after this slide.
Given the MWBE community in New York and the feedback, this is a group that very often gives, they are very direct about their concerns and challenges. And I have to say that they were really appreciative, but it was a program that they felt was worth their time to come to and know that these conferences are very important and key because it's a way for the minority in women, typically small businesses and especially the SDVOBs, really to get to meet with the various government agencies and to hear their points of view, but more in terms of getting to know who at CUNY has to have that discussion with. And I do have to say, it was an honor to have Trustee Kim, Commissioner of SBS, and Myra Lenores, Trustee Lenores at the panel for the chambers. It was something that wasn't often done, where the chambers and the associations get to meet together and really discuss the on-the-ground issues. And the Trustee Kim really moderated a great panel. And the team that was here doing all the work was very, the everyday work that it takes to do a program like this, but especially our Vice Chancellor Hector Batista, who kept things moving and knowing that also Vice Chancellor Mohammed Al-Tala was there. It just meant that we, the level of the experience truly was captured there. So I just appreciate everyone that was here. Ally Banks, Supplier Diversity, who also had a role in it. So everyone brought what they needed to make sure that the program was a success. So can't wait for the next program. That's, you know, and conference that we will look forward to in that regard. Yeah, just any other questions? Okay, so we'll move on to the next.
Thank you. This is a topic that we wanted to address in response to a request from, or a comment from a Trustee Kim that was kind enough to share information on the city side about disparity, when the disparity study. So we tried to gather information in a rather similar fashion than the city did to see what, you know, what the numbers would look like from the state side. And it's essentially a breakdown of the subcategories that comprise the whole MWBE universe. So much like the, this is separate between CUNY and then all of the CUCF Capital Projects. And the reason for that is, you know, the nature of these two groups are, have substantial differences. So the numbers may look different. So by combining them, we would probably miss the information that it's providing. And so the numbers reveal, they look, my first thought, and then I will let the Subcommittee comment on it. I think that they look fairly similar. That doesn't mean that they look good, but they look fairly similar to what happens on the city side. Of course, the women business enterprise is within the ethnicity. Of course, it's not an ethnicity, but that's the way, you know, the state categorizes. So on the CUNY side, the women business enterprise participation dropped from 70% a couple of years ago. Now we're tracking just over 50%. Asian-American and African-American, it's growing. Hispanic, it's hovering around 25%. And on the CUCF side, it's even interesting. The Asian-American has a vast majority of all the categories, followed by women business enterprises. And then Hispanic-American is lower than the CUNY side. And African-American is more or less similar to CUNY. In terms of the industry breakdown, this is the four categories that the state requires for us to report. And so naturally, in our case, in CUNY, we went from 70/30 in 2022 to more or less 50/50. And the reason for that is during the pandemic years, there was not a lot of investment in infrastructure for natural reasons. And that spend was shifted over to coming out of the pandemic. Now we're going back to, I would say, normal times where there's, you know, a huge component of services, including software as a service, which is a big investment. And naturally, on the construction side, you'll see that that's pretty stable over time. About 80 to 85% is construction, pure construction. And then about 9 to 13, 14% is construction consultants. So that's the picture of the last two fiscal year and where we are or how we're trending in the first quarter of this fiscal year. Just a reminder, the state fiscal year starts in April. And so it's a quarter before our fiscal year. So, but I'll pause here. Trustee Kim, I don't know if you have any comments?
Yes. First of all, thank you for breaking this down. It's going to be really helpful for us to keep looking forward. Just back on the fair, so again, it was an excellent program. I think Trustee and Chair Wilkin, you know, thank you for your leadership on that. Everybody gave such positive response, like you said. I will say that October 2, the New York City, we're having our annual procurement fair at Barclays Center. And I know CUNY is participating, but it would be helpful, if possible, for CUNY to also blast that out to all the vendors that came here to get more word out. And it's just helping all the businesses to get another bite at the apple. And we have over 80 agencies, including CUNY, represented there. So that would be, I think, a win-win for everybody. As to the numbers, I just have a question. Because if you say that these numbers, let's say, whichever fiscal year you pick, they add up to 100%, but if you say that WBE is 71% in fiscal year '22, then are you saying that the Hispanic-American, Asian-American, African-American numbers here are just representing men?
That's what I was going to ask too.
Because if it's women and men, then you're double counting on the WBE side.
It is possible, but there's no distinction in the reporting side. It's, again, the state provide that category, women-owned businesses or minority. You could be a women and minority, but it's not double counting. Oh, actually.
You only get counted as a woman if you have, if you're a black woman, you only get counted as a woman.
Yeah, that's right. So, yeah.
Is the way that I, that's the way, that's the only way that math works. Right, so.
Right, but then that's not, you're not properly reflecting the Hispanic-American population that's actually getting contracts because you have to pull out the women and add it to the men who are also getting it. I'm pretty sure you're double counting here because I wouldn't say that, you know.
No, you're actually undercounting.
30%, you're undercounting?
You're undercounting on race.
On race?
You're undercounting on, because if, because those numbers, the columns add up to 100%, which makes no sense.
Right.
Right? So if you've got, the 70% of MBE has white women, Hispanic women, Asian women, African women, and Native American women.
That's right.
In that category. So you are by definition undercounting how many. So you are by definition undercounting how many Hispanic American people there are, or how many black people.
So that, that, you're raising a very good point. And we noticed the same as well. This is coming directly from ESZ, and it, it's pulled directly out of, of the system. So there's no really any manipulation of any kind. But given that they have the source of information, what, what we will do is we'll.
Make a special request.
We'll go back to them and say if we can.
You have to disaggregate that WBE.
So we make sure that we see a, a, and more, I would say, proper reflection.
I, I would venture to say, and I, we're in a, we're in a public setting, that there's a reason why this is being done that way. Right? And we, we have to get to the bottom. We should request it and see, but there's got to be a reason why, right? Because I, I am assuming that question has been asked by somebody before us, right? So we, we should, we should figure that out, but we could definitely get that data. I mean, one of the challenges that we have as a system is that we're, we're not allowed to give a lot of information, like what we're doing now, we're not allowed to give out in a, in a public setting. We're, we're, it's, it's, it is, um, the state prohibits us from doing that until the, until, until the, until the governor announces, right? But because the board requested this, you know, and we answered to the board, we, we went and got the information, but I, it, it has been, it is, it is a challenge. But I think it's a point well taken. We'll, we'll go back and ask the question.
So to clarify a, a few things that, um, one, there are, there are, um, a state, New York State, uh, make sure that the information that is given out is given out to everyone. So if they are doing a disparity study, which often this information comes from, and there will be one coming up with New York State, they will make sure that the information is consistent with their study and accurate. What happens sometimes is depending on the timeline with which their, the information is given out, it could look a, a bit different. Often, WBEs by Fed, and I could be wrong, so please correct me, federal definition is Caucasian women. New York State several years ago felt that, and, and rightly so, that women should not just be Caucasian women, and we've had that discussion. So depending on where that came from, and I think we need to, and it's good.
So, okay.
We have an open, transparent conversation with the committee.
That is another one.
We're going to go in to, to look at that. That's number one. What we do see here is clearly the need to make sure that the programs, as in CUNY, as in the state, and executive orders from Mayor Adams, is that we need to do a better job. We need to do, where we are looking to make sure that, that the population who are doing business and the population who are, live in New York is consistent with procurement. And that's not necessarily an easy task, but that's the level of standard that, that is needed here. In terms of the numbers, perhaps what we'll do is define them, you know, so that it's clearer in terms, in terms of what, what we need to do. But that is for sure a, a need for New York. And New York sets standard and, and what the models look like for the rest of the country.
Yeah, I mean, I think, one, one thing that I want to just, to get back to trustee Kim's point, and, um, I think we, we should start with last year's numbers, right? Because those numbers have been reported and get a, ask them a lot of questions about because I, I don't want to create a situation. So that way, this committee has a sense. Because if we look at last year's numbers, we should be able to tell, it'll tell us a story, right? And they won't be, it shouldn't be, it won't be that far off. So why don't we try to get last year's numbers and then do it and, and come back to the committee, present those numbers? And then we could then figure out how to, for us to try to create something internally to be able to more reflect to the, to the committee.
And, yeah, and New York State publishes the numbers, give every agency, correct? That is under the 15A, every agency in terms of minority women business legislation must produce that information. What was helpful here as we continue, uh, this committee, which is still in its early stages, is that we're now, if I'm not mistaken, trying to do it more on electronic basis, correct?
Correct.
And bringing in some new, so we'll, we'll be much more aware and, and definitive in making sure that whatever we have will be consistent in terms of what information we're giving out. But it's, what we have is consistent with New York State and, you know, in terms of the measures that they go through.
Perfect. Yep, we'll, we'll take that action and we'll report back as soon as we, we get the, the accurate breakdown. Um, yes.
Another thing missing here, to speak to trustee Wilkin's point, is there's no indication of percentage. So if the number of MWBE ownerships doubled, then that, that would say that the women, WBE stayed flat, whereas others grew. Whereas if it halved, then the women ownership would have dived. And so it's really unclear what this says without a, a total count or a count of non-MWBE as a percentage as well.
What, what it shows, that's a good point. What this shows is merely a, a, a share of each one of the, of the subgroups within the MWBE and what that trends look like, whether it's going up, down, or, or staying flat. There's, of course, several different ways to measure it, which is, wanted to, you know, put a stake on the ground and, and come up with something that at least is fairly similar to the way that the city did their study, but we don't necessarily have to follow the same format. If this doesn't really, if this, this subcommittee feels that this doesn't really tell a story, then we can certainly modify and, or try to find different ways to analyze information. We, I think we're all trying to get to the same thing, trying to see where the disparities reside and try to address it. So any, any recommendation, I will have to, to explore it.
Just to give it an analogy, this is like biting over scraps of the same pie, but actually the pie may have grown and it misses that completely. So I, I'd suggest incorporating a next.
That's easy. Yeah, that's easy.
And that, that is true. I mean, one of the things that we, that we have done since Chassa came on board is, and a mandate by the board, right, through the chair and then vice chair, was increase the pie to try to unbundle. So now we have an investment firm that is a minority. You know, we have all these different things that are, right, that are, that we're doing and a lot more. And I think that that, to your point, is increasing the pie because in the past, those were areas that we didn't touch. We were, you know, and, and frankly, the board has mandated us, yeah, you have to look at those areas. So, um, we, we should.
The next meeting.
I think those are valid points and we should definitely, um, I, I, I think what would be helpful, you know, and I don't know how you do this, I don't know if I'm breaking a board, a board rule, but what would be helpful is that if we could get you guys to give you, give us your thoughts on this, um, you know, just send it, send it and CC me on it, right? And so then we could begin to really internally sort of get these numbers to a, to a point where it sort of makes sense. I'm not the chair, so I can't acknowledge.
I know, I'm just.
Um, yeah. Um, so, you know, to make sure that, um, that we get to, to the points that you guys are raising, which are very, very good points.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, there, I think there are just three main points. We can email you, but I think that three main points. One, this, the total sum, if you don't have that, it's not.
So, yeah.
Helpful.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll include that.
So total sum. And then I just looked up just to check, you know, how you get certified, and they're separate in this. So maybe New York State has been doing this wrong a long time. I would, it's not the first time we've found something like this. So I think that the fact that you can be certified as a woman only, like that's, and then it has all the information, versus ethnically, and that's their list right there, I think that is, that, those are the main two points. I don't think any, because to me, the numbers is a separate issue, sharing the numbers. We're not talking about the numbers right here. We're just talking about how, like, those values are constructed. And I think the next step is discussing the numbers and the trends, but if they're not constructed correctly, like, as you said, either double, undercounting or double counting, because there are some businesses who probably sign up for both because they can, in which case they're not being undercounted, they're being counted twice in there. Because when I search just now to see, you can search for a business by looking up women owned, and then you get there, and I bet some of them are by African American women. So I think that there's the potential of, yes.
What, I, just to define this point, it's very specific as to how the, um, the categories are, are created. I, I, you know, I'm sure trustee Kim knows this very well, among others that are here. And the reason for the categories, and it's interesting that, you know, you bring that up, the reason for the categories is based on what is required to do a disparity study. And every three years or so, between three and five, both New York State and all of the cities in New York are required to do disparity studies to, and, and as a result of that, that pretty much transcends where the emphasis should be from the various agencies to make sure that they do what's necessary to, to, within procurement as far as reaching, reaching goals. I know prior to this, we showed a little bit more of the highlights of the capital procurement and how that's done, but, you know, this is, this is real stuff. 95%, and I keep that in my, my, I always mention it in my mind, 95% of all businesses in New York are considered small businesses. So we need to make sure that, that we do as much as we can in, at CUNY and our partners among the city and in the state, in, in terms of any information that we provide here too in that regard. And of course, what we're also encouraging is having students become entrepreneurs. And we had our wonderful trustee chair, Salama Tudumbaya, who was also there, making sure that students were looking at becoming business owners. So very, very, very glad you were there too, at the, at the conference.
So, um, this is the main part of, of the update on the program. There's a few slides on the construction side. I'm not sure if you want to go over that.
Yeah, do we, uh, do we, how's our time with things? We're.
It's 6:30. It, it's up to you. I mean, I think.
Just on successes or?
I think we've scrolled through it.
All right. We're going to scroll through them, but if, just, and we want to keep to.
Yep. Okay. So, um, thank you, um, chair. With Asbury's request, we, our team looked at some of our success, we call it success stories, some samples and examples of the utilization of minority vendors in, in our work, and we wanted to share that with you briefly. So first example here is Otavino Corporation, which is a, a WBE organization. They worked with us on the Baruch College project in 17 lakhs. It's a stone restoration firm. Their utilization during this project was about 1.3 million dollars, and their work and performance have, was really satisfactory and helpful in keeping the project on time. And they did demonstrate flexibility to meet the project critical pass. ATEC Electrical Enterprises, another minority organization, worked at College of Staten Island with various fire alarm pieces, and the utilization was about 3.8 million there, and they did contribute to keeping the project on time. The Island Fire, same idea, electrical and fire alarm contractors, working, working on a Queens College similar project to the Staten Island project. Utilization was about 1.4 million dollar. Multiphase Electrical is another WBE firm that worked with us in the New York City College of Technology in the name of whole cooling system. Their utilization was moderate somehow, but they also contributed to the work. The same firm worked also on Baruch College on another project that also was a good contribution to the project. And thirdly, also on the Bronx Campus Wide project. So this firm works while it's a small contribution, but is being utilized in more than one project. SES System Associates, it's an MBE firm, worked on the Brooklyn College West Quad. It's a trade company on HVC, and the work was about 2.5 million, and they did miscellaneous mechanical work in this project. PB Contracting Corporation, also at Queens College, and it's a masonry work, about $2 million worth of work, and their coordination and supervision particularly was great to coordinate the different facets of the project. International Espresso Removal, it's a WBE firm, worked at Baruch College for a value of about a million dollar, and their work was good, performance is great. They were subconsultant, demonstrated flexibility to meet the deadline. Kurtz Architects, a WBE firm, and also did work with us in administering the work and leading into a path of success, successful completion. And also an architecture firm, also an MBE firm at Razan Hall in Queens College, also contributed to the success of the work. And I believe that was the last slide.
So, yeah, that'll continue and, and know that, that CUNY for MWBEs are open for business. Any questions or, or the discussion? Okay, with no more items on the agenda, I move to adjourn this meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? All right. All right, have a good evening.